Good afternoon, everyone. This March 4, 2025 meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Linder, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck?
Here.
Councilor Raff is excused, but Councilors Afghan?
Here.
Mbo?
Yeah.
Wenlin?
Here.
Verdic?
Here.
And Corrigan?
Here.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone up, will you please stand and join us in the pledge? Our first item of business this afternoon is an executive, or this evening now. This is an executive session. City Attorney and Ms. Osnek, will you please review the legal parameters for us?
Thank you, Mayor Buck. Members of the council, you will now meet in executive session for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons, that would be me and other staff, that you've designated to negotiate real property transactions and also to consider information and records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session, which will be in the adjoining room. So therefore, we will be terminating the broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session, as I've previously just announced. No decision may be made or will be made in executive session. And at the end of our session, we will return to open session here in council chambers.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, we will recess and reconvene in the workroom.
Okay, we are back in order. Thank you everyone for your patience and also Council Raff is joining us virtually. Next item on the agenda is public comment. I have one person signed up, Diane Cassidy, please come forward. If anyone else here would like to provide public comment, please fill out a white form in the back of the room and bring it to Ms. Linder. Hi Ms. Cassidy, please introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Street, oh, am I on? Okay. As I read the list of your goals for the city council for this year, I was dismayed to find that so many of them run counter to the supposition that local government is nonpartisan. Taken together with past and current city policies and practices, I am more than ever unhappy about where I live, having been a resident for, in Lake Oswego for over 49 years. The problem stems from Lake Oswego no longer having a nonpartisan governing body, one that sticks to civic duties that only the city can do, such as the provision of police and fire safety, streets, bridges, water and sewer infrastructure, and with luck, good parks and recreation system. There is a lot of literature about why local government should be nonpartisan and how politicians should set aside their own political agendas. To do otherwise unnecessarily polarizes citizens and leaves those who don't fit into the prevailing orthodoxy out in the cold. I am one of those people and I am most certainly not alone. In case you wonder what practices I find ideological in nature and not part of your civic responsibilities, here are a few examples. From the 2025 goals, attract and support a diverse population. On its face, it sounds noble, but the goal cannot be achieved unless some action is taken that favors one race or identity group over another, which is obviously illegal discrimination. In your minutes, it says that is important, that somebody wrote that it is important to attract a younger, more diverse population. Now you've added age as well as race into the mix. To combat climate change, on a citywide level, that is an impossible goal. To make policies and regulations to address climate change would only add another layer of nanny state intrusion into citizens' lives and cost citizens more money. Educate, don't regulate. The state already does enough of that. This isn't your job. Ensure a safe and secure community. As long as the chief, police chief declares he will not cooperate with federal laws regarding illegal aliens who have committed crimes in our city, and as long as men are allowed to use women's public restrooms and locker rooms, city residents and women and children in particular are not safe. There is no place for adherence to some woke ideology when it presents clear and present danger to others. The country is rejecting these policies and Lake Oswego should too. I have others?
Thank you Ms. Cassidy, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment?
All right. We're gonna move on. We have two proclamations we're making this month. In March, we honor the invaluable contributions, achievements, and resilience of women throughout history as we celebrate Women's History Month. This month, we celebrate the achievements of women past and present. We uplift their voices and recognize their vital role in shaping our society. We reaffirm our commitment to building a future where every woman has the opportunity to thrive, where her contributions are valued, and where her story is honored. We encourage the Lake Oswego community to visit the Celebrate Diversity page on the city's website to explore the library's reading list and programs focused on Women's History Month. The signed proclamation will also be available on the city website. And this is also Disability Awareness Month in March. The city of Lake Oswego designates March as Disability Awareness Month. This is a time to promote inclusion, accessibility, and equal opportunities for individuals with disabilities. Disabilities come in many forms, physical, sensory, intellectual, and mental health. Every person's experience is unique and inclusion benefits us all. Lake Oswego residents are encouraged to take part in Disability Awareness Month by learning about different disabilities, advocating for accessibility and inclusion, supporting organizations that serve individuals with disabilities, and engaging in conversations that promote respect and understanding. This signed proclamation will also be available on the city's website. And now we consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes item 7.1. This is adoption of the findings, conclusions, and orders in AP 24-04. That was an appeal of the Development Review Commission's approval of application TR 49924001007-3 to remove 22 trees at 233 E Avenue for onsite improvements. As well as item 7.2, approval of meeting minutes from January 9th, January 21st, January 25th, and February 4th. And finally, item 7.3, which awards a public improvement contract for the 2025 Pavement Management Rehabilitation Work Order 378. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Back them.
All right, motion made by Council Corrigan, seconded by Councilor Boop. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Did Council Raff say, oh, he's abstaining, okay. That that motion passes six. That that motion passes 6-0 with Council Raff abstaining. All right. Next up, we have two study sessions this evening. The first is the South Shore Fire Station Task Force Recommendations and Finding. We have Mr. Bruner, Assistant Chief Artman, and Mr. Durkey joining us. Good evening to you all.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilors, city manager, and staff. I'm Chris Durkey. I'm the Chair of the South Shore Fire Station Task Force. I'm joined here tonight by Assistant Fire Chief Christine Artman and Management Analyst Quinn Bruner. We have about a 30, 35-minute presentation prepared. That's a summary of our report. But if you have questions or comments or want clarification on anything, please interrupt us as we go along. In February of 2024, based on findings from a community survey the year prior, which showed that more than 50% of the community supported investing in the South Shore Fire Station project, you instructed staff to begin a needs assessment and community engagement process to rebuild the South Shore Fire Station. And on September 3rd last year, you unanimously passed Resolution 2438, creating the South Shore Fire Station Task Force, and charged us with five directives. Specifically, A, to review and provide feedback on, A, the fire department's assessment of community coverage needs; B, existing facility and site conditions at the South Shore Fire Station; C, the department's vision for the next generation of service provision; D, preliminary cost estimates; and E, a full-scale community engagement strategy contingent upon a City Council decision to advance the project. In earlier this year, in 2025 City Council Goals, you affirmed the continuation of last year's initiative with the goal of concluding the South Shore Fire Station Needs Assessment and launch a community engagement process. The task force assembled by the council and staff is an excellent cross-section of our city, including fire department staff, neighborhood associations, advisory boards, community members, and two amazing students. Now, I know quite a few of them are here tonight, so I'd like to ask them to stand. If you're on the task force, would you please stand up? From the start, the task force's goals were to respond thoroughly and objectively to the five directives while encouraging the full participation of all task force members. We sought to leave no stone unturned. The task force held six meetings. Our agendas led to rigorous discussions, which reached consensus on each issue. In our report today, we'll share eight findings and how those findings relate to your five directives. And at its conclusion, we'll recommend that council direct staff to proceed with two key efforts moving forward. First, commission a preliminary design and more detailed budget estimate based on the scope and program that we've developed, along with options for cost savings. Concurrent with this preliminary design, direct staff to explore the option of acquiring the parcel to the west. And second, further develop and commence the community engagement effort.
Let's start with finding number one. Good evening. The South Shore Fire Station has reached the end of its useful life. In 2008, SERA architects systematically identified inadequate design elements and deficiencies at the South Shore Station. We have strategically invested in upgrades and addressed maintenance issues as detailed in the task force's recommendation report. Despite these efforts, 11 significant deficiencies remain. I will highlight just a few. Seismic improvements. While the apparatus bay was seismically upgraded in 2003, the living quarters have never been seismically improved. In addition to lacking seismic reinforcement, the sleeping quarters do not have necessary egress windows. Another structural issue is the part-pitched, part-flat roof construction. The flat roof section collects water, which fails to drain effectively. The HVAC system sits on top of the flat roof and pooling water, causing great concern for service technicians who must stand in water while maintaining or fixing our insufficient HVAC system. The backup generator has been repaired multiple times. However, as last year's ice storm demonstrated, it provides insufficient power for essential operations during outages. Additionally, our electrical system cannot support the size of generator needed to maintain the station's emergency power needs. Sewage problems. Despite regular maintenance and troubleshooting, sewage continues to back up from the drains in the bathroom facilities. If someone who does not regularly work there inadvertently puts food in the garbage disposal, it will most likely come up in the shower drains later in that shift. Let's move on to finding number two. The city needs a fire station in the southeast quadrant of Lake Oswego to maintain the current level of citywide service. This ties directly to Directive A, the fire department's assessment of community coverage needs. Our city has four stations housing 44 firefighter paramedics, three frontline fire engines, one ladder truck, two reserve engines, and additional light response vehicles. Here's a map showing the four fire management areas, or FMAs. Station 212's FMA is in red. Last year, fire responded to 5,117 incidents. 69% were medical emergencies, 23% for public assistance, 3% were fires, and 4% were false alarms.
Now, I didn't realize this before joining the task force, but LoCom, our emergency dispatch center, tracks the location of every single fire apparatus, regardless of where they are in town, in real time using the AVL, Actual Vehicle Location System, that uses GPS. So dispatch can always call the closest piece of equipment to the location of the incident. And here's a great example. The fire—the ladder truck actually came later, and that was from TBFNR. But the truck and the boat are our piece of equipment. And it just so happened, coincidentally, that an incident at Mary's Woods, the boat and the water rescue team was the closest apparatus. And LoCom knew that and could dispatch it immediately to Mary's Woods. So what that means in the context of the South Shore Fire Station is that the city as a whole benefits from all of the city firefighting assets, regardless of which station they call home. In other words, if this station were to go down, say, in an earthquake, the entire city would lose 1/4 of our first responder capability, not just the southeast quadrant. The city's recovery rescue boat would also be offline in this situation. The next issue to consider is that of response times. Response time consists of several components, but the only part impacted by the station's location is drive time. That's the metric we'll be using throughout the report. Drive time standards are established by the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and Clackamas County. NFPA standard is a drive time of eight minutes or less for the first arriving paramedic. And since all our firefighters are also paramedics, that's the metric that applies to us. Clackamas County standard is that 90% of the time for Priority One calls, those are high acuity calls such as cardiac arrest, stroke, difficulty breathing, or significant trauma, the first arriving paramedic must arrive on scene within eight minutes of being dispatched. And our contract with Clackamas County stipulates that failure to maintain this standard would lead to the county withholding funding.
In addition to the loss of funding, drive times impact on survivability cannot be overstated. Research shows that the optimal response time threshold for predicting survival from cardiac arrest is 6.2 minutes. The survivable threshold is prolonged if the cardiac arrest occurs in public and a bystander provides CPR. The response time is equally critical in fire operations. According to the NFPA, property destruction in a residential fire generally exceeds 50% after eight minutes of burning. This chart illustrates the rapid rate of property destruction between 6, 6, and 10 minutes. What that means is that a fire that starts as a room-and-contents fire is likely to extend beyond the room of origin after eight minutes. As time progresses, fire spread increases, making egress options more limited. Finally, the structural integrity of the house declines, complicating aggressive interior attacks designed to stop the forward progress of fire and increase opportunities for rescue.
Let's tie this back to finding number two, the need for a fire station in the southeast quadrant. To quantitatively evaluate this need, we looked at drive times with and without Station 212—sorry, South Shore Fire Station. There's a lot of data in our report, but I think these two maps best illustrate our findings. This first map shows drive times citywide and specifically for that southeast quadrant of town, which is served by the South Shore Fire Station. The green area is drive times of four minutes or less. The orange is six minutes or less drive time, and the red is eight minutes or less of drive time. The drive times are calculated by the city's GIS team, and it's based on best-case scenarios. So they don't—it doesn't allow for traffic delays, weather delays, road construction, that type of thing. Now, let's see what happens when we remove South Shore Fire Station from the data. You can see the impact is significant and severe. The red area, drive time between 6 and 8 minutes, has increased from 9% of the residents to 31% of residents. And there are other vulnerabilities to consider. A freight train blocking State Street would prevent the downtown station from accessing that southeast quadrant of town. And if an earthquake damaged the bridge on McVeigh at Oswego Creek or the bridge on South Shore at Blue Heron, that would block first responders from downtown and from the Gene Road Station from accessing this quadrant of the city. So for all these reasons, we concluded there must be a fourth fire station in the southeast quadrant of the city.
Finding number three. A new fire station should be built to meet the needs of Lake Oswego Fire Department for the next 50 years. The long-term spatial need is approximately 14,000 square feet. There are three key areas in a fire station. We have the apparatus bay, living quarters, and public-facing space. I'm going to go through some of the square footage drivers of each space, but the slide will show you every piece of that area that we talked about in the task force. Starting with the apparatus bay. It's the most technical area of the station, equipped with overhead electrical hookups, plumbing, and underground drainage and filtration. The 16-foot wide lanes with doors on both ends to facilitate driving through the station instead of backing. This limits traffic disruptions and reduces accidents related to backing, which are some of the most common. South Shore currently has two single bays, but should have three and a half bays, similar to the main station, to accommodate Engine 212, Boat 212, the tow vehicle, and additional apparatus. And as you can see, they are expert backers. They have about one inch to spare when they're backing that boat in. There's been a few hang-ups. As you can see on the overhang there. A new station would be built with the capacity also to house a ladder truck. Currently, only the Gene Road Station has that space, preventing us from maintaining a reserve ladder truck, housing mutual aid trucks, or providing an alternate location if Gene Road were to go offline. Similar to a hazardous materials incident, the entire station should flow—should follow a hot, warm, and cold zone flow. In the hot zone, which would be the apparatus bay, that would be a designated area for everything contaminated that needs to be decontaminated. Contaminated PPE, or personal protection equipment, and other equipment such as boots, gloves, helmets, turnout gear, EMS equipment for medical calls, fire hose, et cetera, that would be in the hot zone. The warm zone would contain pressure-negative areas for cleaning and decontaminating gear, and also the ability to shower prior to entering living quarters. Within this warm zone would be additional storage, like separate PPE turnout storage, like you see up here, with negative pressure ventilation needed to remove the carcinogens and toxic off-gassing. Additional storage needs would be EMS supply storage. The current space is inadequate. It's basically a cupboard above the washer and dryer, requiring frequent trips downtown to replenish supplies. Finally, a dedicated shop for maintaining and repairing equipment is needed. Finally, that brings us to the cold zone, which is the living quarters of the fire station: kitchen, bathrooms, sleeping quarters, and the office. Ventilation systems would not allow fire ground contaminants or diesel exhaust to enter this area from air, personnel, or equipment. Contaminated PPE and equipment would never enter the cold zone. Total square footage for the apparatus bay would be about 6542 square feet. Sorry, now we're going to the living quarters, the cold zone. First, we'll start with the bunk rooms. After visiting stations—new stations at Clackamas and Twalton Valley, the South Shore Task Force determined that eight bunk rooms would meet our current and future needs. South Shore currently houses a three-person crew, but additional bunks would be utilized for any upstaffing needs due to weather events, increased call volume, peak wildfire conditions, and/or protracted incidents. Move-up situations require additional dorm rooms for mutual aid crews. Disaster preparation necessitates extra bunks for additional line personnel or command staff. Bathrooms. Current bathroom facilities are inadequate. Individual, private, and equitable facilities are needed for basic privacy. The office. Currently, there is no private office, and that would be instrumental for professional coaching and administrative functions. As seen in the slide that Quinn had up earlier, the additional living quarter facilities would bring us to 5,827 feet. Square feet, give or take. Finally, our public-facing space, key areas being public bathrooms, respite room, lobby, entry, and storage, and a multipurpose community room for department training, community classes. And as I mentioned earlier about the cardiac arrest survival rates, bystander CPR has a direct impact on survivability. Clackamas County and the Lake Oswego and Lake Oswego community are 10% more likely to step up and provide bystander CPR than the rest of the nation. Essentially, we are adding precious minutes to the clock for our families, friends, and neighbors. A community room would greatly increase our capacity to reach and increase community preparedness and resilience.
Here's a subtitle slide.
Here's a subtotal slide. So, thank you, Chief Artman. Having established the need for a fourth fire station and the approximate size of a new facility, the task force then turns its attention to identifying the right location. Now, this work responds to directives A and C. We did not begin this process under the assumption that the current facility was in the right location. We instead used the two thousand and twenty-three buildable lands inventory to identify all vacant or partially vacant parcels within the city, and then we honed our search down using criteria that the task force developed. So, um, as you might remember from the two thousand and twenty-three buildable lands inventory, vacant parcels were those that had a minimal improvement value, and partially vacant parcels included those that already had something constructed on them, in many cases, a single-family home, but those were often on lots that were much larger than the maximum, or the, the building was significantly smaller than the maximum lot coverage allowed, or they had low improvement values. So, we began by removing all developed parcels from consideration, so you'll see the purple disappear here, and then we narrowed our focus to the fire, to the Station Two Twelve Fire Management Area, knowing that a fourth station needs to exist in the southeast quadrant of the city. We then, uh, filtered for physical constraints and eliminated all parcels that did not have at least point four acres of contiguous developable land, recognizing that's still much lower than what we would need to build a fire station, but we wanted to raise the floor here. So, uh, that got us to thirty-nine alternative sites in the southeast quadrant of the city, and then we turned it over to the task force to identify criteria for further narrowing the search. Task force members developed the seven criteria listed on the screen here, and applying these, we identified one viable alternative on Stafford Road, which we analyzed further. Now, while adequately sized, this parcel is the current site of a single-family home, and it has a negligible impact on response time. Now, this site has a high likelihood of requiring condemnation, should this be a route that we chose to pursue, and task force members expressed a strong aversion to pursuing this path. To ensure we covered our bases, we also removed the constraint of land availability and assessed the best possible site from a response time standpoint alone. Uh, this location, uh, this location would have required the acquisition of five homes, and the response time improvement was still marginal. So, finding that our current drive times are excellent already, and that there is no viable site that would substantially improve drive times, task force members voted unanimously to recommend the current site as the optimal location for a rebuild. Now, this comes with logistical challenges related to maintaining service through construction, but the task force would deem these much more easily solved than acquiring a new site through condemnation. Any questions here on how we came to decide that the current site is the way to go?
Looks like it's smack dab in the middle.
It's very sensibly planned, placed.
Finding number five. Finding number five, alternates, including renovating the existing station, were deemed infeasible. This finding responds to directives A, current needs, B, current conditions, and C, future needs. We have the apparatus bay. You recall that the existing apparatus bay underwent seismic upgrade in two thousand and three, but that current bay is too short, too narrow, and too far from the street to allow safe pull-through parking. Remodeling the apparatus bay to solve these problems would eliminate the current bay's seismic capacity. The current living quarters are constructed in unreinforced concrete masonry, a brittle and inflexible structural system that performs very poorly in an earthquake. Bringing this structural system up to essential facility standards is impractical. Also, bunk rooms would have to be constructed, additional bunk rooms. The large toilet room is completely inadequate and would have to be replaced with individual toilet rooms. The, the fitness center, an optimum fitness center, would need a higher roof structure so that firefighters on the stair stepper wouldn't have to duck into a skylight on the top step. A remodel strategy is usually justified when a major portion of the, of the existing building can be retained or inexpensively improved. We found no part of the existing structure that met this criteria, and we therefore concluded that remodeling is infeasible. Next, staff considered the option of closing the station and contracting for first responder services from TB FNR and, um, and AMR. TB FNR is our closest mutual aid partner, and its two nearest stations are on Hidden Springs in West, uh, West Lynn and on McEwen over by, um, Lower Boones Ferry. So, we evaluated the impact to response times, if, or drive times, excuse me, if we relied on these two stations absent South Shore. So, here's the map we saw previously of drive times without South Shore. So, would you, if you would focus your attention to that southeast quadrant of town served by the South Shore Station, let's add back now the resources of TB FNR and see what the impact is. You can see the southeast quadrant's drive times are virtually unchanged. Staff also studied the possibility of contracting with AMR for first responders on medical calls. Aside from the cost of the service, the city would have limited oversight on AMR, and we would still be without fire first responder capability. So, finding five concludes that renovation is not viable, and that contracting out first responder service to TB FNR and AMR is not feasible as a long-term solution. However, contracting for services may be a short-term option during the construction phase. This cost and other transition options will be addressed during the next phase. Finding six, staff should further explore the benefits and feasibility of acquiring additional land. This finding ties to Directive C, future needs, and D, project costs. The current site, including the parcel to the east previously purchased by the city, is approximately thirty-one thousand five hundred square feet. That's in red. Our recommended spatial program totals fourteen thousand square feet, and our planning code allows a thirty-five percent maximum lot coverage, which would therefore require a site of about forty thousand square feet, eighty-five hundred square feet larger than the current site. One option to mitigate this problem would be to construct a two-story building with bunk rooms on the second floor. However, a two-story building is more expensive and would add up to ten seconds, or about seventeen percent, to the firefighter's turnout time. The city owns an additional one-point-three-acre parcel to the east, the reservoir site, that's in blue, which I understand is available for laydown during construction, but is not available for a new building because it's slated to house a new reservoir. There is an adjacent lot to the west of approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred square feet, in yellow, that might be available for purchase. The property owners are supportive of this project and have indicated that they would be willing sellers. The preliminary plans in the next phase will better inform the need for a larger site, and would also address the grade difference between the current site and the neighbor site to the west. Therefore, we recommend that concurrent with the development of the preliminary plans, the council directs staff to investigate the feasibility of purchasing this adjacent parcel.
All right. We finally turn our attention here to cost. Our finding that the project of this size may cost as much as eighteen million dollars is related to directives C and D. Now, before I dive into numbers, I just want to put these in context. So, we are there at that yellow star right now. We have established that we have an issue and the general parameters of what we should build to solve it. We have put this cost estimate, we put this cost estimate together with the SIDS, using the industry standard for this phase of cost estimating. Our estimates here are based on fifteen comparable projects, thirteen similar fire stations being built in the region, plus City Hall and Lorac for regional calibration. These do not, however, include any specific design elements, which is work that would take place in Phase Two, delivering a project-specific cost estimate. So, really quick, what is in this Phase One cost estimate? We have hard costs, which is construction, labor, and supplies; soft costs, which is design, project management permitting; and escalation, which assuming this, we assume this project would take place in approximately twenty-twenty-seven, and so we need to account for the fact that prices are likely to go up between now and then. Costs excluded from this round of cost estimate are those associated with land acquisition, those associated with financing, and, um, uh, costs associated with maintaining service in the district while, uh, construction is ongoing. Those all would be accounted for in a Phase Two cost estimate. So, we feel good about what's, what's included in this number, what's out? All right. So, um, our hard costs based on those thirteen comparable fire stations range between eight-hundred-and-fifty to nine hundred dollars per square foot in twenty-twenty-five dollars. The standard practice that I heard from, uh, uh, those working on similar projects is to use thirty percent for soft costs at this time. For reference, the latest project that, the most recent project that the city did of this scale was the Lake Oswego Maintenance Center, and soft costs on that project ended up being very close to, just shy of thirty percent, um, at completion. Escalation, we assume a construction midpoint in twenty-twenty-seven. Those working on similar projects recommended using a three-to-five percent range for annual escalation. Our current escalation rate is about one-point-four, one-point-seven percent, depending on which index you use, that's from last year to this year. However, the annual average escalation for the last five years is more closer to four-point-seven percent, and we're staring down a fair amount of market volatility, so we opted to use conservative estimates in this model of five percent annual escalation. Okay. These then led to that number there, the twelve hundred, uh, sorry, the, uh, twelve hundred to thirteen hundred dollars per square foot, costs all included in twenty-twenty-seven dollars. We then multiplied that by the fourteen thousand square foot estimated facility size that Chief Artman laid out earlier, and that gets us our seventeen to eighteen million dollar project range. We did these calculations on a range, but have opted to focus on the high end because we do not want to create an artificial floor when there are lots of ways to potentially bring these costs down. Task force members explored three project options, one that was a fire station built for our current level of service, one that would provide for moderate expansion but may be constrained by the current site, and one that would fully meet the needs of the next generation of fire service, allowing for expanded operations in twenty to thirty years in the event of continued southerly population growth, and also allowing for maximal upstaffing during disasters. Given the relatively high fixed cost of building a new station, the bare-bones model that we explored was around fifteen million dollars, the task force members found that the marginal cost of building bigger today would pay dividends down the road, prolong the life of the station, and reducing the potential need for renovation in the medium term. In the next phase of fact finding, staff would hire an architect to create preliminary designs, explore the feasibility and benefits of acquiring the adjacent lot, and determine the total project cost based on our specific project, not comps in the region. This then would come back to, to the city council for feedback and review, and we would have the opportunity to adjust the project scale through value engineering. I'm about to talk about funding method, but before I do, any questions on the cost estimating process or how we arrived at this number? All right, last section here. So, the task force members then turned their attention to studying a variety of funding options. These included internal funding, which is the method that we use to fund the Maintenance Center project, external funds, which could include grants or soliciting funds from partner organizations, as well as taking on new debt or general obligation bond. Having reviewed these funding options, uh, task force members concluded that a general obligation bond was the most viable method of funding a project of this scale. Of course, we would continue to pursue external funding options for specific project elements, uh, but we, it seems unlikely that we could accomplish this project without taking on new debt through a general obligation bond. Now, while a total, uh, total bond ask is yet to be determined, we anticipate being ready to place this measure on the May twenty-twenty-six ballot at the earliest. The full bond amount, which would, it would include financing costs and eligible transition costs, um, and this would be included in, these would all be included in a Phase Two cost estimate. So, I know this, that was very high-level, but any questions on how the task force came to find a bond to be the most viable funding source?
You say the bond would include the transition costs?
Um, it, there are potential eligible transition costs that could be included in the bond. That's to say, if we were to phase this project, right, there would be increased construction costs associated with doing that work, which would be eligible for a bond. However, if we were to contract for services with a partner organization, that would be operational and ineligible for transition costs. So, that would, ineligible for inclusion in the bond. So, we'll have a full assessment of what those costs are, as well as what the funding source can be for each of those methods when we come back, if we come back for Phase Two.
In closing, we're at the midpoint of this fact finding stage. We believe the task force has done all that can be done in terms of needs analysis, programming, and pricing without having preliminary plans. Therefore, the task force recommends the council directs staff to proceed with two key efforts in moving forward. First, engage an architect to develop preliminary plans for a new South Shore Fire Station. These conceptual plans would explore options of one versus two-struck, two-story structures, teardown versus phasing, optimum size of site, economies of reduction in circulation spaces in the program, and develop alternates for cost savings. Then engage a cost consultant or builder to develop a more detailed cost estimate based on the preliminary plans and price the cost savings alternates. Part of this effort would include staff exploring the feasibility of acquiring the adjacent parcel to the west. And second, direct staff to further develop the community engagement plan and execute the early stages of that plan as appropriate. We anticipate the temptation to reduce the budget or program at this stage, but we urge the council to hold off. The best time to study cost and scope reductions will be when you have preliminary plans in front of you, and a more detailed cost estimate based on those plans, and a shopping list of options and, of, and savings opportunities already priced out. Thank you. We're anxious to hear your thoughts and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jerky. First of all, just want to thank you all for this great presentation, um, to Councilor Corrigan for serving as our council liaison to this task force, and for all of you who are in attendance tonight and your colleagues. I knew we had a good task force put together when we saw the names on the piece of paper, but you all look really good together, too. These are very nice photos that got taken during the course of this process, and you look wonderful. And so just thank you all for your, your great work. This report itself is a little, you know, with the pictures and depictions, is very nice, but I think it's important we have a report like that because this is something we want to share with the community so that everyone can understand, you know, the vital need for this, this project. And, you know, we, we plan our agendas very deliberately, and so you'll note that we have this South Shore Fire Station Task Force Study Session followed by the cemetery ownership and transition plan and study session. We are a full-service city, and we think of everything. So, this is Plan A, that's Plan B. Okay, colleagues, questions? Any questions? Councilor African?
First of all, I echo what Mayor Buck said. Congratulations. You guys have done an outstanding job. You've looked at the information, you have done your research, you have analyzed it, you have summarized it, and you have presented it well. Job well done.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of doing this as soon as possible. I think we're ten, fifteen years behind, uh, in upgrading or replacing our fire station. So, the sooner we do it, the better it is. And I do recognize that you guys keep emphasizing on the cost, sit tight, you're absolutely right. We have a concept, now we have to take that concept forward into preliminary design and have the professionals put numbers to it. So, I'm going to ask some questions. Do not read anything into it, it's just for my information. As I said, I am in favor of doing this project as soon as possible. How many calls, uh, were responded from this fire station?
Just over nine hundred last year.
You mentioned a drive-through, uh, fired, fire station. Is the current lot deep enough for a ladder? Is that what the technology is?
Ladder truck.
Ladder truck to back in there?
I'm going to let Chris answer that. We did determine yes, but he has the construction background.
Yeah, I, I, I believe the architect would have to confirm the turning radiuses, but I believe that if the equipment bay, apparatus bay was moved as close to the street, say, as would be permitted with a front yard setback, there would be enough room to go. would be permitted with a front yard setback, there would be enough room to go around the back and drive through.
Did you consider flip-flopping the water reservoir with the fire department lot?
We coordinated with our partners in engineering to talk about the feasibility of lining these projects up, and the conclusion that we came to is that it would be, given that the time-sensitive nature of moving ahead with this project, that it would make most sense for us to pursue these projects independently while pursuing opportunities to support one another, right? The water reservoir project, and I won't put timelines to Erica's project, but I understand is still a little ways away, a little ways away, and we did not want to, we did not want to try to sync up timelines. There's also, I'm not an engineer, but I understand that.
My question was more specific to, is the fire station current property size large enough for a water reservoir that we're thinking of in the future? If so, flip-flopping the properties?
That's a great question.
Okay. Would you guys look into that, please? Where my, where my line of questions are going is that, do we absolutely have to buy the property next door? And last question, when we are executing this project, the, there needs to be a transition, right? So, what would that transition look like?
So, there are multiple avenues for addressing the transition. We, we're looking at all options right now and trying to form a plan. Examples would be contracting with AMR, contracting with Twelton Valley, finding a location somewhere near in that FMA that could house the firefighters and the apparatus temporarily. That would probably be ideal, so they could still respond in that neighborhood. We're looking at the operational plan, trying to find the best option.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Afghan. Councilor Wenland?
Well, to echo my colleagues, you guys did a wonderful job. I toured the facility six or eight months ago, and basically, your report is everything that I walked away with. I mean, and then some. I think anyone who physically goes on site would come up to the same conclusion, and it's not a facility that is up to Lake Oswego standards for sure. And so, I'm all in favor of replacing. To my colleague, Councilor Afghan, I am interested about the water reservoir and figuring out. I know that there are different paths, but I look at it as an opportunity that, we have a saying in this city, dig once, and I know that they're not on a parallel path, maybe on the planning, but that was a big lot, and, and I'm just looking at, at least have the discussion with the inner departments to say, here's some possibilities to think out of the box maybe a little bit, because I definitely think we, we know we have to do both projects. Timing-wise, I'm not sure when it would be, but if we're going to do it, let's do it right, I guess is my feedback. And then, I know this is uncharacteristic, and I'm probably out of order to do this, but I am going to ask my friend Jeff Goodman, who has been instrumental eight years ago on talking about this fire station. Does this meet your guidelines, and are you satisfied? Okay, well, that's a good enough answer for me, and he's been an expert at this whole thing, and I'm, I, to everyone who's served on this committee, I mean, it is a A-team. When you look at all your faces, I know, I recognize many of them, and we really put together what I would call class act Lake Oswego, and so, with confidence, we can go forward, I think, and pursue. And thank you, Trudy, for sitting through everything and being our liaison. She has been updating us all the way, and she said it was a very, very positive group. So, anyway.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you for all your service and your work. Great presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Wenland. And Councilor Boop?
Oh, thank you. So, I am very happy, honestly, because I've been always, you know, talking to fire, there's, you know, I like them. That's the thing. So, I have no favorite workers. They're all great in our city. We are lucky, and thank you, Trudy, for everything. And like John said, when I saw Jeff in the thing, I just say, I'm waiting, which number they come with? If Jeff said yes, I'm saying yes. So, Councilor Goodman did that, and so, but I like what my friend Afghan said, Councilor Afghan, like honestly, buying another thing. If we can consolidate the two lots, you know, we have that, you know, if we can do it, it's the best way to go. And thank you, all of you that worked on this project, and especially Chief, Assistant Chief Hartman, you know, thank you so much, and I'm glad we've seen what happened in Los Angeles, somewhere else, and how it's important to have a, you know, A-type, like John said, A-type fire stations everywhere in Lake Oswego, you know, not, when you see that most, 60% of their work or more is for, you know, medical things, we all want that to be a place that's accessible and well-equipped. So, I am in. I'm in.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Boop. Councilor Verdic?
So, I concur with my colleagues, and I just want to thank Christine and the crew at the South Shore Station before our 2024 goals gave me a tour of the station. And like Councilor Wenland, it was just awful, and what our crew was doing to make it work was impressive and very appreciated, but I think they were going, have gone on for too long, making something that really is not up to par manageable. I'm not even going to say work, they just kind of managed it. So, I'm very thrilled that we were able to make it a goal last year and for the success of this committee. You guys did an amazing job, and I also wanted to shout out Quinn. I have heard so many accolades for the work that you've done and helped guide this, so thank you for your work on this, as well as all of our volunteers, and Christine, and I am very excited to get this moving forward. So, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that they've indoctrinated you, so you have the fire apparatus, and, and, and you know, I have to say this, South Shore Fire Personnel, they never complain by sitting in a subpar facility, and, and that's being way generous. It's past due, and so, I, they're professional to the nth degree, but we owe it to them to have a better facility. So, especially after you go on tours of the other facilities, there is this camaraderie thing where it becomes, you know, less camaraderie and like, hey, you're in this really nice facility, and I'm in this. So, we got to get it up to par so that we have equal stuff.
Yeah, that's right. Councilor Corrigan?
I'd like to say, I'd like to say thank you again to everyone who worked on this project, and I'd especially like to call out Chris Durkey, who championed this the entire way. And I'd also like to point out that he has a remarkable expertise in construction, spending his career doing large construction projects. So, the city's benefited greatly from him giving us our time. So, thank you, really thank you for that. So, thank you, everyone. You've made our job very easy, and I look forward to what we can possibly do with the information that you've given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Corrigan. Does the, so the transition costs, you know, how would we, is that something we'd have to budget for? It seems like it could be kind of significant. What do you think about it?
Yeah.
Stay Green, Karen. Thank you. I think it's the mayor shutting, no, I'm kidding. No, we'll obviously have to budget for it, and I think it will depend on the option that seems the most viable. When I hear Chief Artman talking, I hear, oh, we're going to rent a house somewhere, right? Because that's the only way, no, I mean, because the, the crew has to sleep, right? So, I think you should think about it in, in that neighborhood of what would it cost us to essentially rent a location, whether we're renting a service from AMR, or whether we're renting a physical property for the period that we're under construction. That's what, and yes, we'll have to budget for it operationally.
When I was in the Coast Guard, they were constructing a new fire station in that town, and the firefighters lived at our Coast Guard station as they're like temporary, and it took for years. They were there the whole time.
I don't think it'll take us that long.
And it was great. I got to cook for them.
And we don't have a Coast Guard facility in Lake Oswego.
They were delightful. The, so the room, the room for the battalion chief, but the battalion chief bunks at the downtown station, so it's just like a, for future planning?
For future planning, if, if we ever had an earthquake or any, any kind of disaster response, and like Chris talked about, if South Shore was separated, it would be really great to have two zones, so a battalion chief downtown, a battalion chief at South Shore, or if, if we wanted to have a secondary EOC, I don't want to get into that, but, or third, it would be room for command staff, counselors, mayor, yourself. We would have extra bunks. And really, if you think if we just had one additional apparatus responding out of there, that's already six right there. There's only two left. So, it sounds like a lot, but it would be very quickly used up.
Right.
Well, that's not that much space.
No, what was another thousand? Thousand square feet. The, was there any, are the way that they're designing the fire stations today different than they did it 20 years ago?
I think the cancer prevention and health, health and wellness are foremost in, in the build. So, they're thinking about making it a stress-free environment. It's not sterile, it's, it's homey, and then it's also with the negative pressure ventilation, we're making sure that we're not bringing contaminants into the living areas, which my whole career, we did. We walked around in our turnout pants, we, we did whatever we wanted, free flow through the station, and best practices dictate. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot more controlled environment.
Right. Well, and for Mr. Durkey, do you feel like if we went forward with, with the bond, we'd be able to pull together the support of our neighbors to get out there on the street and knock on doors and do all that kind of?
Well, I, I will commit that we will do our very, very best. Yes.
I'm confident as well.
The Palisades Neighborhood Association, South Shore, McMays, South Shore, and Mary's Landing are all very aware of this project, and they've been given regular updates, and they've asked for continual updates. So, everybody's watching, everybody's, everyone I've talked to is behind it 100%.
Great. And all of you on the task force, and we, we selected you for your, your expertise and input on this, but also thinking down the road, you are the folks who know the most now about this project, and we're going to be, you know, leaning on you as we go out to the, if, if and when we go out to the voters to help us sell this, this project to the community, bring people up to speed with its importance, and, you know, why it makes a big difference to the, to the overall health of, of Lake Oswego. I, so what I'm hearing, I do like Councilor Afghan's idea about that other lot, so if, and I hear some support.
We could put that into the mix for Phase Two if you want to proceed. I think the challenge for reservoirs, as you probably are aware, but let me say it anyway, is that you can't decommission the existing one until you've actually built the second one. So, and if we're years away, we may not have designed where the second one is, right? The one that you are using today, you have to keep using until the new one is ready to go. So, trying to figure that out, we'll have engineering take a look, because I, I agree with you that acquisition of property is a difficult and complicated thing for the city to do. So, if we can avoid it, that would be great, but we also can't compromise the water system. So, we'll put it in.
I would give you the incentive to get it done really fast.
Yeah. Except for that has rate implications, which I also know you don't like, so, but we'll take a look at it as part of our due diligence in the next phase.
Okay.
But I don't want you to wait to say yes or no to going to the next phase.
No, 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 just as part of the current, the future analysis, yeah. But we hear a lot of good support for this project and moving it forward to the next phase to hone in more on the cost and continue conducting a good community engagement to make the community aware of this project. Build support. Thank you again.
And I would always say that the quicker we can do this, I mean, costs are going to continue to escalate, and so, I think, what we learned with LoAC is that the longer we wait and have all these sessions and whatever, the, what happens is you pay another 20% in cost, and I'd rather, we know we need it, I mean, I would say that this needs to go on the expedited.
Yeah, the challenge is just always hitting the election dates, and so, we're going to schedule it to, as I, I think that we're on the May of '26 timeline.
Yeah.
Which is pretty fast, actually, for all the work that needs to happen.
Right.
But I hear you, I agree.
Really, that's the only, because we, I mean, obviously, this May wouldn't be good, and November's no good because that's a school, you know, old thing, so really, that next May is.
Well, it's really the next available election, given the amount of work that we have to do.
Yeah.
But we could concurrently be planning.
Absolutely, and that's the genius of this schedule, is actually, we'll be doing sort of the, the first phase of design work to get to a more refined cost estimate. So, we'll already be, unlike the LoAC, where we, we got voter approval for the bond before the project was designed, you'll be on your way to designing this project before you go out to the voters. So, the timeline, if the voters approve the ballot, will be shorter between the time that you get the funding and the time you begin construction.
Okay.
We'll still have to do permitting and all that good stuff, so it won't, it won't be instantaneous, but we'll be.
What?
Permitting.
Oh, permitting?
Yeah, we still have to do that.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll take a little, well, I don't know if people want to leave, maybe, you know? Are you all going to stay for the cemetery? Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Cemetery Ownership and Transition Plan. Plan B. I have, I take Parks Director Andrew Home be joining us. No one's dying to hear this.
Right? They have to.
Oh. And Ms. Bigelow of the Adult Community Center joining us as well. Glad to have you both here.
We're glad to be here.
Okay. Take it away.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Ivan Andrewhome, Parks Recreation Director, and with me this evening is Maria Bigelow, our Adult Community Center Manager, and we're here to discuss the Oswego Pioneer Cemetery and the possibility that the city would become the owner and operator of that cemetery at some point in the future. A little bit of background on why we're here to talk to you, and I don't know the history before 2016, but in 2016, I know that the city was approached with the idea that the city take over the Oswego Pioneer Cemetery, take ownership of it, take over operation of it by the then-board members. At that time, there was not the willingness to, to move forward with that, but we were tasked as staff to look and to work with the Oswego Pioneer Cemetery Board to look for possible suitors within the, the community or other operators. At that time, we and the board were unable to identify anybody that would be willing to take over the ownership and the operation of the cemetery. Fast forward to 2021, and again, the board approached the city with a letter that's in your, your packet. your packet, again, asking if the city would consider the ownership and operation of the cemetery. During that review, staff was tasked to take a look at their records, to take a look at and contact the mortuary board to see if there were any outstanding issues with the operation, or if the mortuary board was even aware of the Oswego Pioneer Cemetery. The answer to that, and I was the person that spoke directly to them, was there were not any issues, red flags, and that they were aware of the organization and the cemetery. The reason is well spelled out in the letter from the board, is primarily the board that has been operating the nonprofit and operating the cemetery is getting to a point where they are not seeing an influx of new members, and quite frankly, they're getting to the point where there are not people interested in helping them by becoming new board members to take on the joy and burden of owning and operating a cemetery. As we looked at that, as we were tasked to look at the cemetery and some of its, some of the issues that may be around it, there were a few key findings that we found as Parks and Recreation staff, and I know that our city attorney's office also took a look at some information, and as far as the legal aspect of taking over the cemetery. I want to highlight a few of the things that we did discover as we were looking through their information and having multiple conversations with the board. One of the things that was unique is, under their current operation style, they do have revenues that are sufficient to cover their current expenses, and they have always had the revenue for the actual sale of the plot and the burials that covered their expenses. To our knowledge, without getting into and seeing the actual boxes of physical records, we believe that the majority of the cemetery plot records are current, and we do know that they are in good standing with the state mortuary board. Property ownership over the years, and again, we're going back to the late 1800s, seems to be well documented. There is an exception to that, that if council decides to have us further look into it, we will bring that forward and discuss that with the council. The cemetery consists primarily of two sections, the southerly section, which is the pioneer family section, and then the northerly section, which is considered the active plot section. The Pioneer Cemetery, though they do not contract directly for the service of excavation or purchasing headstones, they do have established relationships with contractors that both do the excavation and also provide headstones. They do have an onsite caretaker, Sexton, who manages the maintenance, plot sales, security, burial coordination, and then the OPC, other board members oversee the administrative functions as well as record-keeping for it. The written records that are physically held by OPC board, during my conversation with the mortuary board and their conversations with the board, that they do comply with state regulations. And that, the other thing that we found while we were talking to the board, is the board was very interested in retaining the current caretaker in Sexton for at least two to three years as a transition period with our ownership or other type of agreement, in order to give that individual an opportunity to plan for not being on the cemetery, but then also give us an opportunity to work through some due diligence with records, and then also to hone our operational approach. We, in this time, have, I should say, Maria Bigelow, has had an opportunity to put together some information based on Metro and the City of Oregon City and their operation of cemeteries, and have actually drafted some draft rules, regulations that would be consistent with ORS 97.710. Those are also in your packet. The essential question here for council, and why we're here having a discussion with you, is to get further direction on should we pursue moving forward with the acquisition, eventual acquisition and operation of the cemetery. Very pertinent to that discussion is the location of the cemetery and its proximity to our municipal golf course, as well as the Lorac facility, and it is, the reason that that is pertinent to this discussion is that the transition of taking over that facility and being able to maintain and operate that facility in the proximity to a large operation would make that something that we could make that transition relatively easy. The other thing is that with the condition of the cemetery and the future condition of the cemetery, it makes sense that it fits into not only its unique character as a pioneer cemetery, but also would have the oversight of our excellent Parks Maintenance Crew. So it would be well-maintained. The annual operating costs, we did a minor assessment of that, and when I say that, we looked at it before completely understanding that, and we put it in the packet. It would operate at a net loss, and the primary differences between the city operating and the nonprofit operating is that we have an inability to exchange work for somebody living in the home. We, as a city, there's not a way that we can do that. So we would have costs to maintain the property, and we would not be able to exchange that for letting somebody live in the home. But then, on the other hand, this was based on the average, the last five-year average of plot sales. We did look at that, and then this number was also based on us performing a lot of the maintenance ourselves, and then a very high estimate if we were to contract out the actual maintenance of the grounds. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate your work, both of you, working with the Pioneer Cemetery folks, you know, this, I mean, they have, I didn't realize they'd come back, you know, so, I mean, for years now, because I know after I was elected to this seat, you know, they came and we talked about it, and I mean, it's been a struggle for years, and hearing the history of the cemetery, reading that, really, the fascinating history that was included in the report, and how this happened before, the cemetery falling, you know, into disrepair, kind of before this current group came onboard, you know, that's not anything we'd want to have happen again, certainly. I mean, that was way back in the day, I feel like. Probably wasn't much over there at the time, if you think about it, you know? But yeah, this does seem to kind of fall into that category of one of those things where, you know, someone has to do it, and it's probably going to be us, you know? It might not have been the thing we all thought we'd be doing, but it is important and in the interest of the community to keep this site up that does have, contain a lot of the history of the town, and obviously, is something that's, you know, regardless of who's buried there, is just an important part of the town's history, and, you know, something that someone has to look over. And it's a tough business, these cemeteries, you know? No one wants to do it. So you've done a great job outlining, you know, laying out some of the, and we, of course, met an executive session to talk about some of the real estate part of this earlier, but can, can you articulate a little bit more on how we would go about developing kind of our own business plan for this? Would we essentially model what the Pioneer Cemetery is doing, is what they're doing, like in terms of how they sell these sites, like what they charge for the sites? Is that kind of all, is there like market rate, you know, for this kind of thing? Or are they like, well, have we looked at that and been like, wow, they're way undercharging or way overcharging, or who the heck knows? I mean, would we, how would we go about making those kind of operational decisions in terms of how we go about selling and running the facility?
So we would have to change the operational procedures from what the nonprofit is. Obviously, the nonprofit has some ability and some flexibility to do things that we cannot do. They have current arrangement with their Sexton caretaker that includes incentivizing different aspects of the work on the site, which we obviously, as municipality, would not be able to do. But primarily, we would look at the fees that they're currently charging. We would do an assessment of regional Pioneer Cemeteries, other cemeteries, and make sure that we were somewhere within that range and make that available to council. But then, we would primarily move forward, and we would have a bit of a division of labor in our proposed operations, where the Adult Community Center would be the contact point for basically our administration of plot sales. Burial arrangements would take place by appointment, and that would be the administrative portion, the record-keeping portion would be administered by our Adult Community Center staff, whereas the actual taking care of the grounds, coordinating with contractors for digging the plots, and also for placement of the heads, would be something that our parks staff would coordinate. And obviously, this would be a coordinated effort between our Adult Community Center staff and our parks staff to perform those duties. Yes? Oh, okay, yeah, that's how it would differ, but we would definitely do some sort of market analysis to set the fees, to make sure that we're in line with fees. And then, we have done a little bit of research, as I mentioned, looking into Metro operations as well as Oregon City, and we have found some things that are a little bit different, and especially looking at those, there are some procedures that they have that put them in compliance with what we would consider normal business practices and accepted business practices for a government entity, and we would adopt those. We would work immensely with our city attorney's office, because we would have to write a code that was compliant with ORSs to operate it, and then obviously, that would be something that we would use as the basis of our operation. But that is our tentative plan. I would also like to mention that in our conversations, and I mentioned it earlier, with the board, that the board really does have an interest in a transitional period in having their caretaker there to pass on the knowledge of the actual physical property, and give us an opportunity to look at that, but then also an opportunity for us to dive into their written records and start looking at those and proofing those, and then digitizing those and putting them in a permanent archive that's not necessarily sheets of paper in a box. Because my understanding is that they do have paperwork dating back to the late 1800s, like physical paperwork.
Yeah. That would be really interesting to look through that. I can't wait till that's in the repository. New section. Dig into that. Dig into it. We can pun. Counselor Wedlund.
Well, I think it's our civic duty to help with the transition, and I just want to call out the current board that is running the facility and the cemetery and the operations as doing an exceptional job over the years of maintaining it. They've done a great service to our community by taking it over, and they've actually kept it going.
Yeah.
But most of the board is, it's not that they're not interested. I think they still carry the burden and the weight of this operation. It's just that they're getting too old to deal with it. And as we know, the volunteer situation in many organizations, there's just not a group to come in to do this. So I'm all in favor of making an orderly transition as, I won't say as quickly as possible, but as consciously deliberative, to make sure we have a very smooth way to transition from them to us, and that we do it with grace and respect, and we do have to follow all the laws and all the rules, because we're a city organization. But I just know handing off things from a volunteer organization to a government situation, it's probably worlds apart of what operationally one has to do. But I do have confidence in this board that they have had tremendous effort to make sure that records are in order. When I heard that the federal government keeps the retirement records and things in a vault in some place in the East Coast that's an old mine, and they can only let enough federal workers retire each month, I think 10,000, because they have a limitation on how much paperwork they can put in the elevator to go up and down each month. So this pioneer, did you hear that?
Yeah.
Who knew? So all I'm saying is that even governments maybe aren't up to speed with the latest, greatest technology, and I also have complete confidence in our staff in being able to digitize this and get it up to the proper records. But anyway, I'm all in favor of doing, moving forward, and I was happy, I mean, I guess we can't really disclose this, but I'm going to say it anyway. This is a positive financial situation that we have for this cemetery. We are not inheriting a financially stressed situation. It's super healthy. It has a balance sheet, and they're actually running it, I know with all the trade-outs and all that stuff, but it's in the black, and the estimates that the director has told us about are not so far out of whack that it would hinder our budgets. So I just want everyone to know that we're inheriting, while it's a volunteer group, financially, they're very solvent, very responsible, and actually, way better than I thought it would be. And I'm sure all the records are going to be the same thing.
Yes, cold hard cash.
Yes.
That's a, I mean, in the report, I mean, there is obviously some operating expenses, but it does seem to be very reasonable, and there are some revenues to offset some of the expenses, and that, you know, will continue. I don't think your buzzer's working, but I know, yes, Counselor Afghan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know what my colleague, Counselor Wedlund, said? Fully support that. Compliment to you and your staff, especially your assistant there, where you actually have looked into this industry. When I read the report, I learned so much new information, and I was impressed how much you have researched before coming here and talking to us. I have a leading question and then curiosity question. Leading question is, this property is right next to Lorac, correct?
Yes.
So we have a vested interest how good or bad maintenance-looking property right next to our brand-new facility is.
That is a leading question, and I would say, of course, we do.
Thank you, Director. The curiosity is, how much does a plot cost these days? Do we know?
I'd look at my records. I don't want to waste your guys' time.
I'd look at my records. I don't want to waste your guys' time.
Thousand dollars. I think it's a thousand.
Eight hundred for an ash. Twenty-three hundred for a full length.
Thank you so much.
And by the way, that is Joe Collins, the current caretaker in Sexton at the cemetery.
Does anyone ever put the ash in a full length? Like, get the full length, just for the space?
It can happen.
Interesting. It can happen. Or because maybe they changed their mind, too. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Well, you know, they, they buy it and then they decide, oh, I'll be, you know. Well, it does seem like it would be, you know, given the, you know, just given the, it seems like there's, there's a good willingness on the part of the council, you know, to move forward with this plan to continue investigating the, or just to, just to continue working through the particulars of how we could bring this together. That if there's a way to give both the city some time to continue in its due diligence work while also giving the Pioneer Cemetery its time to kind of put its own transition plan in place, I think that would be a great coming together, two worlds where we have time to do the work we need to do and they have time with, you know, somewhere in the 18 to 24-month time horizon where we could then, you know, have an agreement in place. What do you all think about that? That sounded like a good, you know, okay.
That sounds like great direction.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone. And thank, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You folks, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us. I'm glad that we can work together. And thank you for your work, you know, shepherding and taking, being such good stewards of this important part of the town history for so many years.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. It's bathroom break. Okay, we are back in order. And next item on the agenda is item 10.1. This is the American with Disabilities Act Annual Update. Pleased to welcome our ADA coordinator, Ms. Kelly Byrd. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Buck and city council members. My name is Kelly Byrd, and I serve as the city's ADA coordinator. I'm here tonight to present the 2024 Americans with Disabilities Act Annual Report and highlight our ongoing efforts to enhance accessibility and inclusivity in our community. This report reflects our continued progress and is, this, this report reflects our continued progress in removing barriers and ensuring equal opportunities for individuals with disabilities. I just want to thank you all for being committed to fostering welcoming in an accessible environment for all residents and visitors. As we recognize March as Disability Awareness Month, it is important to reflect on the work being done to improve accessibility across all city programs, facilities, and services. I want to extend my appreciation to the city's ADA technical team, the All Ability Employee Resource Group, and the many staff members and community advocates who are dedicated to this work. I also want to thank Mayor Buck, city council, city manager Martha Bennett, and Public Works Director and city engineer Eric Rooney for their leadership and strong support of the ADA program. If you all can remember back, it was in December of '22, we adopted the city's first ADA transition plan. The plan focuses on four key areas: reviewing the city's programs, services, and policies to ensure compliance, evaluating the accessibility of the city buildings, parks, and parking lots, accessibility, assessing the accessibility in the public right-of-way, and developing a strategic plan and tools for implementing recommended, recommended changes to the city facilities and practices. The transition plan serves as a roadmap for ensuring that the city's buildings, parks, and programs, and public spaces are accessible to everyone. An annual reporting is a key component of implementing the transition plan. The purpose of the annual report is to highlight the city's efforts in implementing the transition plan across all departments, but also to document innovative programs, notable accessibility projects, and outreach initiatives undertaken between January 1st and December 31st of 2024. For my presentation this evening, I will be highlighting some of the progress and accomplishments in the report. If you haven't already read the report, I would encourage you to read it as it highlights some really remarkable things that we've done in the city over the last year. As the ADA coordinator for the city, my responsibility is to ensure compliance with the ADA regulation and to respond to accessibility concerns. In 2024, my office responded to more than 100 public inquiries related to accessibility. Some, many calls were, were in regards to accessibility, accessibility issues in private property where the city does not have jurisdiction, but I, they'll refer to other resources for help. We processed eight formal requests for reasonable accommodations across the various city programs or departments. This is not a comprehensive count of the, of the ADA accommodation request citywide as departments can make accommodations without letting me know about them. And then in 2024, there were no formal grievances filed. So that was a good thing. Okay. Staff training, education, and development. I was able to provide training to staff on the ADA program at the city. It's a high-level overview of the city's general obligations under Title II of the ADA. And I also was able to teach some sessions to our new employees at our new employee orientation. The All Ability Employee Resource Group met seven times during 2024. Meetings are for staff to get to know each other over lunch and share ideas and plan activities. And I also maintained an ADA information portal for employees. This webpage serves as a central information hub designed to provide staff members with easy access to resources pertaining to the ADA. For outreach and community involvement, some highlights include in March, we celebrated Disability Awareness Month with a campaign featuring a proclamation, social media posts, and, and a video guiding the public on how to request accommodations for city events, programs, and services. And then in July, we celebrated Disability Pride Month with a campaign that had included a proclamation, social media engagement, and citywide events. Here's an image of an event that the library put on that was featured on KATU. And it was a talk by Guide Dogs for the Blind at the, at our library. So I was really proud of that. The library also did a lot of great work this year. As you can, if you read the report, you'd see there's a long list, and I only, I'm going to highlight three things because I want you guys to be able to go to because I want you guys to be able to go to bed soon. So the library was focusing on expanding accessibility through digital resources and outreach efforts and facility improvements while they're waiting for guidance on the future of its building. In twenty twenty-four, they purchased an ADA accessible bookmobile to expand services to those with mobility limitations. They purchased the the van, but it will not be delivered for another eighteen months. So coming soon, which is really exciting. They hired a full-time outreach coordinator to expand community engagement and improve access to the library services for individuals with disabilities. And they hosted thirty-four hybrid events consisting of monthly music events, author talks, and other presentations. These events included one or more of the following. They either livestreamed it, they recorded it for later viewing, or had an ASL interpreter, so ensuring accessibility for all patrons. The library's been a really great partner in this work. Let's talk a little bit about engineering. The engineering department continues to implement the ADA transition plan in capital projects, public improvements as a part of private developments, and minor permits such as driveway replacements. They upgraded a total of twenty curb ramps to meet current ADA standards, including five as a part of the Lane Wood Pathway Capital Project and fifteen through private development projects. They constructed more than a thousand linear feet of ADA-compliant sidewalk along Lane Wood Street and Boone's Way to Twin Fur Road. And install and they also installed an enhanced crosswalk signal and upgraded curb ramps right over here on Fifth Street and A Avenue. And this is a image of community members using the new Lane Wood Pathway. Parks and Rec, I can't tell you, they they do so much. I think there's like two, three pages on what Parks and Recs do. So there's a lot. I can only share three. But the the Events Division continue continues to expand accessibility at the summer events by adding more designated accessible parking spaces at Foothills and Westlake Parks. The Inclusion Support Program delivered over seven hundred and ninety-three hours of services to youth who may need support or accommodations to participate. And in collaboration with Special Olympics Oregon, the Tennis Center continues to provide access to the Center for a nineteen-week athlete program with the the only Special Olympics tennis program in the Northwest. That's pretty amazing. And here's the image of the Special Olympics team at the Tennis Center. Okay, fire. In twenty twenty-four, the Fire Department committed funds to bringing ADA parking and signage up to code at the three of its four fire stations. Additionally, it focused on improving accessibility within training programs and public safety safety initiatives. They repainted the parking lots and the ADA emblems at three of the four fire stations. They installed a curb ramp at the Westlake Fire Station. You could see the the image on the screen. And then they also secured funding to collaborate with care facilities in Lake Oswego, assisting them and the the Fire Department in developing effective emergency response plans for all residents. While this is not ADA-specific, this initiative will support individuals with disabilities who who require a range of accommodations. And then last but not least, I'd like to highlight the Police Department. Ensuring ADA compliance also involves enforcement. The Police Department continues to monitor and enforce ADA parking regulations to ensure accessible accessible parking remains available for those who need it. In twenty twenty-four, the Police Department issued one thousand one hundred and fifty-three total parking citations. A hundred and thirteen of these were related to ADA violations, representing about nine percent of all citations. So we're making sure that we're keeping those spots for those who really need them. As we move on into twenty twenty-five, we remain committed to ongoing improvements in accessibility. Our key priorities include advancing the ADA transition plan to address identified accessible accessibility gaps, opening of the Aquatic Center, which has feature which has numerous accessibility amenities, and then beginning construction of nineteen curb ramps across the city to improve mobility. I'm really excited about that program. I know one person has requested curb ramps in her neighborhood. And I think she said it's been like ten years. So we're going to have a party over there on Indian Circle coming soon. In conclusion, the city continues to make significant strides in improving accessibility and ensuring compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I want to again thank city leadership and staff for their ongoing commitment to making Lake Oswego an inclusive community. And I welcome any questions you may have for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Great update. We really appreciate you coming here to deliver it. Thank you for all your work over this past year. I know we only get to talk to you once a year officially. We see you offline, of course. I think it's so important, the work that you're you're doing. I mean, so many of our residents live with one disability or another. And it really is kind of behind the scenes, something that is often, you know, not discussed and talked about, and it could be really easy to ignore. And I appreciate the work you do to to elevate the needs of those residents. You know, just being here tonight to bring them out into the open. It really is important, and this is work that makes the community more accessible, better, healthier for for every resident. And certainly, putting our resources to work for our most vulnerable residents is a critical part of our of our mission and and work here. Is there anything along those lines? Is there anything within, you know, our ADA transition plan that you feel is, you know, I mean, it's all important, right? But you feel it is especially important, but that is really difficult to accomplish within the current, you know, budget? Are there any things like that you think would be, ooh, this would be really important that we do this, but just financially, it's challenging?
Well, I mean, there's like three hundred million dollars worth of initiatives. I I just think that, yeah, we just need money. I mean, I think we said it last year. Show me the money. My favorite movie is Jerry Maguire. But yeah, we really need to dedicate funds to this work. And curb ramps, sidewalks, they're not cheap. I mean, they're very expensive, but they're so worth it. Because that mean that's means from going somewhere to not going somewhere. And there's so many sidewalks that don't have curb ramps here in our city. So like I said, I'm super excited for the nineteen ramps that are going to be hopefully constructed in twenty twenty-five. But just, I mean, I went to a conference two years ago or a few years ago, and they just said that they asked for just one percent of the budget to go to ADA improvements. So if we could just, you know, if you guys could dedicate maybe one percent of the budget for the Lake Oswego budget to ADA improvements, then we could we could really make a lot of headway in our fifteen-year plan. So I'm just throwing it out there.
It's good. No, we appreciate that.
Fifteen, I mean, I don't have a budget. I'd love to have one because maybe if a department is struggling and they can't do it, then maybe my budget could, you know, help them. But I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, it certainly is work that, you know, spreads out to all, obviously, all the different departments. And really appreciate your coordination with everyone, engineering, and I see Erica here. Parks especially, too, accomplishing all of this. Counselor Willard.
I just want to thank you for everything you do. One of the things when you look at the whole list, it's not just physical construction projects that you're doing, but it's the other initiatives to get people aware and also having events and having people feel like they're included and recognizing the challenges that people have. I think that's, while that's not going to solve all the three hundred million dollar list, it does help focus some of our efforts. It also helps our community know what's going on. And for that, that is harder to do than construction projects to get cultural change. And so just keep at it. And it's all the different things. And it really pisses me off in the Police Department where people actually park in handicap zones with expired plates. I that just, it happened, and and those are just the ones that we catch. So anyway, sorry, that's just my personal grievance, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Willard. Counselor Boo.
Yeah, I just want to sound, you know, thank you for your work on engineering. Thank you. It's just part of what we call D E I inclusion. We have to have that. It has to be everywhere in the city. Every time I walk, because I'm a walker, I just say, whoa, we need a sidewalk here. Because even me, I'm not, I don't have the disability to mobility, but I just have problem even. So currently, yeah. And oh, yeah, we all, and we all, no, yeah, that's the we all. It's like, you know, okay. So, yeah, I, the one percent is very important we need to. And it would take a hundred years with one percent to make everything happen. Yeah.
Curb ramps, yeah, the curb ramps is most of it, and then some parks.
Some day we'll have federal money and stuff like that. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bird. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Raff, would you like to say something?
Oh, yes, Counselor Raff, thank you.
I just wanted to tell Kelly, excuse me, thank you very much for the report. It's very informative, just to know all the great work that we're doing. And that unfortunately, what the small investments that we are making are still making an impact. And and knowing that, that as a council, as a city, we're always kind of thinking about every little angle and everything that we can do to help everybody is really important. And the great work by you and your team is not going unacknowledged. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And by the way, I love the fact that you're, I love the fact that you're asking for budget. I would do the same thing if I were you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Raff. Thank you, Ms. Bird. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Next item on our agenda, this is item eleven point one. It's a public hearing on Ordinance two nine five six, ordinance of the City Council amending LOC Chapter Twenty licenses to establish additional recycling collection services license. We will start with a review of the hearing procedure by Ms. Osneck.
Thank you, Mayor Buck, members of the council. This public hearing involves a legislative policy decision, which is a decision that's within your sound discretion. The public comment process will begin with a presentation by Amanda Watson. Individual commenters are subject to a time limit of five minutes per person. And the clock timer will let you know when your time is up by showing a yellow, then a red light. At this point, I'll ask if there are any financial conflicts of interest, reminding all of you that this is not a quasi judicial hearing. So this is just if you have a financial conflict of interest involving recycling services, and I'll pause for a moment. Seeing none and not hearing Counselor Raff, I think we are ready for the staff report and then public comment.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Watson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Amanda Watson. I'm the City Sustainability Program Manager. I'm going to start with some background about the ordinance before you this evening. So as you know, cities can grant permission for solid waste collection and hauling through a franchise or a license. Oh, thank you. In Lake Oswego, solid waste collection is managed through an exclusive franchise agreement with Republic Services. And so the issue that we are kind of dealing with through this license program, this ordinance, is that the for-profit company Ridwell and Republic Services via their Recycle Plus program, which is available in several jurisdictions in the metro area, but not currently Lake Oswego. They off, these companies offer services that collect reusable or difficult-to-recycle materials from households as recyclables. These type of materials include things like plastic bags, plastic clamshells, light bulbs, and textiles, items that are technically recyclable through special processes, but not through our curbside commingled collection program. So not through that mixed recycling bin that's provided through our exclusive franchise agreement. So the separate collection and hauling of these difficult-to-recycle materials as recyclables from households in Lake Oswego is not yet authorized by the city's, you know, current solid waste franchise agreement. So Ridwell has been operating in Lake Oswego for several years. However, this is in violation of the city's exclusive franchise agreement. Republic Services, as I mentioned, does not currently provide Recycle Plus in Lake Oswego. They do in several other metro area jurisdictions and previously indicated interest in beginning to offer the Recycle Plus program in Lake Oswego with the city's authorization. So through two previous study sessions, the City Council considered how you would like to regulate these additional recycling collection services in Lake Oswego. And in the first half of twenty twenty-four, the City Sustainability Advisory Board considered this question and recommended to the council that you establish a license program to create a legal pathway for these types of services to be made available to residents that would like to pay for them. And there is, you know, demand for these services in Lake Oswego that we heard through that process with the city's Sustainability Advisory Board. And according to Ridwell's website, they have over twelve hundred customers in the city. So when the City Council had the study session in July, you also decided you'd like to provide residents options to receive these services and expressed interest in supporting a level playing field among companies that provided these services through the creation of a license program. Staff then engaged with both Ridwell and Republic Services in developing a draft license program and looked at solid waste and recycling programs in other cities to help inform ours. And then in January of this of this year, you'll recall, we reviewed a draft of the program outline for a license program. And the City Council provided input, in particular, on the application fee for the program, deciding you would like it to be a flat application fee and that it should be higher than the initial staff proposal to make sure that it covers the cost of administering the program. In conclusion, today, we have a public hearing for Ordinance twenty-nine fifty-six, which establishes an additional recycling collection services license. So just to kind of briefly outline what is in the ordinance itself, that Ordinance twenty-nine fifty-six, it amends Lake Oswego City Code Chapter Twenty, which deals with licenses, to establish an additional recycling collection services license. It defines the service that will be regulated, which is the collection and transport of additional recyclable materials. Additional recyclable materials are those reusable or recyclable materials that are not suitable for the curbside commingling as part of our Uniform Statewide Collection List that refers to state statute related to our recycling system and are not otherwise currently collected as recyclables via the city's solid waste franchise. So what we did with this ordinance was we referred to state law and state definitions of things like recyclable material and reusable material to align our ordinance with state recycling laws. The ordinance also outlines the application requirements, the insurance requirements for license holders, and reporting requirements as well. It specifies that violations of the code would be civil violations, and it talks about the enforcement. And then finally, it revises the twenty twenty-five master fees and charges schedule to add additional recycling collection services license fee. And that's detailed in Exhibit A. So this is sort of the legal summary here of the ordinance itself. But just to talk about what the additional recycling collection services license program looks like for companies. The license program is an annual license program. So companies that are interested in providing the service in Lake Oswego would apply annually for a license. Applicants would also have to have a current business license in Lake Oswego. As I mentioned, the the ordinance revises the master fees and charges to add this new application fee, and that would be five hundred dollars annually. So you'll recall, we discussed the amount of the license fee in January. And that initial proposal was four hundred and fifty for an initial application fee and two fifty for a renewal. So this is a slightly higher fee. It is the same for both an initial and renewal. And again, staff feels that's that's adequate to cover administration of the program. And again, staff feels that's adequate to cover administration of the program and complies with the city council's direction from the previous study session. The license program also involves having the city receive the list of materials from the companies when they apply that they would collect, and the city has to approve that list to make sure it conforms with, you know, the definitions and allowable materials. And then companies would also have to report by annually, so every six months, on the types and amounts of the materials that they collect, where those materials are processed, either for recycling or reuse, the number of customers in Lake Oswego, and the number and types of vehicles used for collection. And this would be an online application process and very similar to our business license fee program to reduce the administrative burden on the city and make it as easy as possible for companies to apply as well, when it would be managed by the city manager's office with support from finance department and IT. So that's all I have for a summary, but please let me know if you have any questions about the ordinance or the program itself. But hopefully this is, sounds very familiar from when we last spoke in January.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watson. Following the process here, we will open the public hearing, and then we will come back to questions. And I have only one person signed up to testify. Ms. Lowen, come on down. Good to see you again.
Good to see everybody again. Hello, mayor and fellow city councilors. My name's Taylor Lowen, and I am the regional operations director for Ridwell, based here in the Portland area and in North Portland. It's great to be back today to express our strong support for the new permit for supplemental recycling services in front of you today and make myself available for any questions that might come up during this evening's discussions. We greatly appreciate the hard work by staff for their work on the proposed permit. They worked diligently to engage with multiple stakeholders, including Ridwell and Republic Services, and have put forward a proposal that appropriately balances feedback from all parties. For this reason, I'm here today to encourage you to support ordinance two nine five six, establishing a new additional recycling collection services license. We strongly believe that this ordinance will further local waste reduction efforts by providing residents with multiple options for supplemental collection services, all with appropriate regulatory oversight. I also just want to proactively address an issue that came up during the January meeting regarding Ridwell's business license. I received some additional information from my team following the meeting, which I shared directly with the city following the meeting, but also just wanted to share it here with everyone today. Ridwell did apply for a business license prior to starting service for any Lake Oswego residents, and at that time, we were also separately in touch with regulatory staff. Sometime later, we were informed that there was a, our business license application had been put on hold by the city, which we understood was pending the resolution of the ongoing discussions with regulatory staff. And as far as we are aware, our business license remains on hold. So further, as I indicated in January, and as we've said since, we are happy to pay business license fees back for during the time which the city has kept our application on hold, which is what we understand will be asked to do once a new license process is established. So I want to emphasize again that at no point were we attempting to operate without complying with any applicable license requirements, and we've made every effort to make the city always aware of the activities ongoing that we've been doing. So we again would like to thank the staff for their hard work and encourage you to continue to move this new permit forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have this evening or at a later date, and just want to thank you again for your time and look forward to a long and productive relationship with Lake Oswego.
Thank you, and thank you for your involvement in this process. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to testify? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll invite Ms. Watson back up. Does anyone have any questions? Any questions? No, oh, sorry. Well, no questions. Oh, yes, questions? Questions?
Yeah, my question were, like, do we, because I didn't see all the, like, what, when everybody in Lake Oswego will have all the material that they can recycle, like, when?
Mm-hmm.
On, no, the recyclable materials that Ridwell, for example, that Ridwell will pick up, what kind it will be?
What kinds could Ridwell will pick up? I don't have it in front of me. I know Ridwell has presented the material, their list of materials in previous presentations, so off the top of my head, and I apologize if I'm missing any. It's on their website, but it is the plastic film, so plastic bags, number one clamshells, light bulbs, textiles. They also collect things like chip wrappers and granola bar wrappers, this kind of multi-layered plastic. There's a fairly extensive list that's on their website.
And batteries, are they gonna pick up batteries?
No, batteries actually are collected through our franchise agreement in the glass bin. Yep. Mm-hmm. I can definitely follow up by email with that list.
Thank you. Yes.
Counselor Willems.
So is Republic all okay with this?
I have not heard concerns from Republic Services on the recent draft. We've definitely worked collaboratively with them. I know we have folks in the audience, and I'm not gonna put them on the spot. But, yeah, from my understanding, no concerns from Republic Services.
The lists are, are, the list that you can collect from each person is, is
Different.
Good, different, and it's all?
They're slightly different, and so the application process, through the application process, both any company that wants to apply for this license would submit their list of materials to be collected, and, you know, as the reviewing staff, I would look through that and make sure it confirms with the definition of additional recyclable materials, basically checking that none of the items that these companies would collect through this program are part of our franchise agreement, right? It's just the, those difficult-to-recycle materials that we're talking about here. So that's kind of the check we'll do in the staff level.
Okay.
Right. Thank you. Will we be able to post the, these reports to the sustainability website?
I need to check with our city attorneys if there's any sort of, you know, privacy concerns there, but my expectation is probably it could be made public, or at least, you know, some summary of it. The intent in kind of collecting the information we're asking for in the report was to increase transparency for customers and
Right.
and understand potential impacts on city right-of-way as well. So we could figure out, you know, how to make at least a summary of the data available, I think. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if we're gonna take the time to put the report together, we might as well share it. Could be interesting, you know? All right. And I just want to acknowledge as well, we did receive two pieces of written testimony in support of the ordinance. Those have been circulated to the council and posted online. All right, would someone like to make a motion on ordinance two nine five six?
Move to tentatively approve ordinance twenty-nine fifty-six and direct staff to return on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five with the final version of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Corrigan and seconded by Counselor Boo. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Counselor Raff. That says seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for your
Thank you.
involvement. Thank you, Ms. Watson. All right, information from council. So do you want to have anything to report? Counselor Willems?
We had a wonderfully successful community leadership awards last week
Yes.
up at the Ironlight, and I will say that it, Lake Oswego shined at its finest, sold out. And I would say that overall, with the exception of a few drawn-out speeches, which I just, I volunteered for the committee next year to
Oh, the short speeches?
Short speeches.
Committee to short speeches.
When I was chair of it a few years ago, it was, yeah, we were in, within an hour, and it was like this, you couldn't speak more than a little bit. So we're gonna do the same thing next year. So anyway, great, great food, great, great event.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, it's great to be there. Thank you. Everyone was there. Yes, Counselor Boo was there.
We had a great thing with the youth leadership at the fire station, and you know what I learned from there? That no more mouth-to-mouth and CPR.
Yes.
And I updated all the teachers at my school. It was wonderful, the kids have, we, Joe and I, we volunteered to go search for bodies in a fire. We did that, we did, you know, it was great. So, yeah, I just wanted to highlight how our fire are wonderful folks and our youth.
Of course. Thank you, Counselor Boo. Update, Clackamas Coordinating Committee, the county is establishing a library task force, is gonna look at the tax program for the operations and maintenance of libraries. They just are wanting to relook at tax, so they're putting together a panel of different elected leaders and community members staff this task force. That'll be taking place. Yes. The, we're also talking about the county table, the, still the bond, the bond program for the regional, regional, you know, regional flexible funds allocation, the RFA process. And they've kind of got it, different scenarios. I'm here, there's a T-PAC meeting, some, I think, this week. And they've got it narrowed down to five different bond scenarios. The one in Clackamas County is the Sunrise corridor, it's kind of planning, money to plan for that process, and then if there's a TV highway, bus enhancement project, and a, an Eighty-Second Avenue project. And then, well, it's about right. And then there's two other, Multnomah County projects, kind of smaller, well, relatively smaller dollar compared to the overall size of the projects, but the Burnside Bridge, it's like a bus, you know, money for some kind of dedicated bus lane over the new Burnside Bridge, and then Montgomery Park Light Rail, kind of starter money, because those are big, big. The Burnside Bridge is like a billion-dollar project, and it's like a five-million-dollar, you know, section. So they're trying to work through, obviously, the jurisdictions are, you know, everyone wants a project in their jurisdiction. So that's the discussion right now. That will be coming to J-PAC, you'll later this month decide on how to best bond. And of course, there's a lot of unknowns with the federal funding. You know, we're so reliant on the federal transportation grants all around, I-5 Bridge, Rose Quarter, and then the projects like the Burnside Bridge and whatnot, and probably through the, you know, construction of future projects like Sunrise. But right now, Sunrise is just kind of in the, in the planning phase. But it does seem like the top three projects, Sunrise, TV, Highway, Eighty-Second Avenue, you know, would be able to be projects that could be moved forward with this money. So, okay, that's all I got. Salem. Salem. Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, just, yeah, 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 Salem. Yes, I did testify on House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight yesterday. That is the Governor's Middle Housing Bill that, you know, and as I said, it's not that we disagree with everything in the bill, but it would just require a lot more code updates. Again, some of it reversing some of the city-specific things that we implemented over these past few years. So just emphasizing that we are seeing the impacts of the middle housing legislation work. You know, we're seeing housing types we didn't see before in all, in our community and in all communities. So things are working. We just want to let them keep working. And I know that we have on our work plans efforts to continue implementing our housing production strategy, but those, like in other cities, would be paused, I would imagine, if we have to send instead our planners back to undo and redo parts of the development code to now comply with new regulations. So we'll see, there is obviously a lot of, you know, the state has put together a lot of support around this middle housing package from chambers of commerce and the development community, but it's, the cities are kind of united, either neutral or some opposed, but we did testify in opposition to the, to the hearing. And then Madison put together a, we sent a letter off as well. Yeah, okay. Nothing?
Nothing?
Okay.
Nothing?
All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you.